Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started with, let's see, today is March 18th and this is the regular city council session. So let's start with our. Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Abu Wesley? Mr. Brand?
Here.
Ms. Goodelia?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we'll have a moment of silence, please. Okay, looks like we've got two proclamations this evening. We've got the first one Meals on Wheels Week and I think K. Fisk is virtual with us this afternoon and Grant is going to share the proclamation with everyone.
A proclamation, whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas for nearly 50 years, these critical programs commonly referred to as Meals on Wheels have delivered more than just nutritious meals to homebound seniors in virtually every community across the country. And whereas the dedicated staff and volunteers who deliver these meals each week provide a vital lifeline and connection to the community, which are sometimes all it takes to keep our senior neighbors at home where they want to be. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs have come together each March since 2002 to celebrate this proven collaboration of local community organizations, businesses, all levels of government and compassionate individuals to ensure that our seniors are not forgotten. Now therefore, I on behalf of Colette Atkins, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim March 22nd through 26th, 2021 as March for Meals on Wheels Week and call upon the members of the community to volunteer, donate or speak out to ensure that seniors in your neighborhood live more healthy, happy and independent lives at home where they want to be. And with that, Kay, thank you so much for the work that you lead with the volunteers to help us make make this a vital foundation to the lives of our seniors. Thank you.
Thanks, Brent. Kay, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I would. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the proclamation. This kind of event clearly is something that helps, you know, highlight what we're doing. It just brings more visibility to to us. And it's important that we give visibility because more people for two reasons. First of all, we depend so much on donation of volunteers. And then also older adults that see or hear what's going on realize that they might be able to take part in the Meals on Wheels program. And it is essential in our communities because there are people who are shut in that literally will not be able to have a nutritious meal if something is delivered to them. The meal is almost the secondary part of the meal, which is almost as important as the meal itself. And that's just the human contact with another person that comes to your door. Until this last year, when I have been working from home, it was a year on the 16th of March, just this week. I never realized what isolation was. I always just thought it was, I really never thought about it. But for weeks, I was, I didn't leave my home at all. I, of course, I'm able to prepare my own meals and I do have family and so forth that I, you know, have interaction with. But for these individuals that are truly homebound and isolated, that daily visit is very, very important. We are certainly not in the business of being physicians, but we do say things like, have you taken your meds today? Do you remember to check your blood sugar? So we do a few little things like that just to prompt individuals into taking better care of themselves. Our visit also is a safety issue too for making sure that nobody has fallen. We do find people who have fallen from the day before we were there and we're able to help them and get them off the floor or wherever they've become disabled. So that part of it is huge too. During the deratio and the pandemic, of course, we altered our meal planning a little bit because in order to reduce the number of visits we had to the home, we started delivering frozen meals several times a week. And then on the days that we didn't deliver the frozen meals, we actually called the clients. So we had some contact with them. We found that they were needing personal care items such as shampoo and deodorant and things of that nature. We found that they needed cleaning supplies and they also needed paper goods. So we've put together little care packages to supply them with these needs during during this difficult time. And we hope that we'll be able to continue to do that in the future. We've been lucky about having people donate these items and not necessarily just the money, but the actual items themselves. So we hope to be able to continue that in the future so that it fills in some of the gaps. But the program is a wonderful program. We're funded. Our largest funding stream comes from the Older Americans Act and then through various charities and grants and begging and that sort of thing, we fill it fill it in with that. So thank you, City of Marion, Marion and Mayor and council members and all of you for your generosity and in doing this for us. So have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Okay, next we've got a proclamation for Women's History Month. And is there somebody available from the Civil Rights Commission on online today? Amal, okay.
I'm online.
Hello, Amal. So whereas in 1977, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution calling on member states to proclaim a day for women's rights and international peace and following the United Nations lead, each year the US president issues a proclamation calling on all people to observe March as National Women's History Month. And whereas women of every background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation, our state and our city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas women lead and play critical economic, political, cultural and social roles in our in our nation, state and city and have been at the forefront of major progressive social change movements. And whereas Women's History Month is observed around the world and provides opportunities to recognize the progress in advancing women's equality, celebrate the achievements of women and girls and raise awareness of the social, economic and political barriers barriers still facing women and girls today. And whereas all societies should work together to secure the rights and full potential of all people in order to achieve lasting solutions to social, economic and political problems. Now therefore, I, Colette Atkins, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Marion, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month in the city of Marion and encourage all residents to observe this month, celebrate the achievements of women and girls and support efforts that promote advancement towards equality of all people. Okay, Amal, do you want to say a few words?
I'd like to thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Amal. Okay, so now is the time in the evening where we have a public forum. And this section is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda, but not associated with a public hearing. Do we have anybody waiting, Rachel? I have not received any comments. Okay. We'll wait just a moment in case somebody's furiously trying to get on there. Still nothing, Rachel. Okay, all right, let's get started with the consent agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F10, which are resolutions 29324 through 29352.
Second.
It's been moved seconded to approve to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F10, resolutions 29324 through 29352. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, consent agenda has passed.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 21-04, designating an area of Marion, Iowa as the 2021 multi-residential housing urban revitalization area. This is the second reading, second consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 21-04, designating an area of Marion as the 2021 multi-residential housing urban revitalization revitalization area. Second consideration, any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ordinance passes.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make the motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 21-04. Second.
Been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 21-04. Questions or discussion?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Renee.
Is there a time sensitive reason why we're suspending or proposing to suspend the third reading?
Your, Your Honor, I can make a comment. This ordinance impacts one property and the property owner has waived their right to a second hearing before the final adoption. If it's okay with council moving forward without this third consideration, that will speed up the project.
Thank you, Amal.
But other than convenience, is there like a monetary, a penalty, a fine? I just, I personally don't like to waive a third reading because it exists. So I'm just wondering if there's a special reason or they just are asking us to do this for convenience?
There is no financial impact, Your Honor. They're just wanting to move the project forward.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks, Amal.
So there's no financial implications if it were to stay and go for a third consideration. Is that right, Amal?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor to approve the motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 21-04, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion passes with one no.
Your Honor?
Yes.
That motion to suspend the rules actually requires six
Okay.
affirmative votes.
Okay, thank you.
So it does not pass.
So it doesn't pass. Thank you. Are there other questions before we move forward?
I'll need to read A3.
Yeah, does, Your Honor?
Grant?
So does that eliminate action on A3? Yes.
I believe so. We'll check with.
Yes, with the motion suspending, not passing, then we don't move to the final consideration. We'll do that at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. So A3, right, we won't move on A3 and we'll proceed to A4. Good question, Grant. Thank you. Okay, so public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2021 through 2022 budget. And I suspect we have a presentation. Hi, Zach.
Good evening, Your Honor and City Council. Tonight, we are reviewing the FY22 budget for adoption. So wanted to give a a brief overview of the budget for the public. Next slide, if you could. The general guidelines that we started with the budget this year is first and foremost, adopting a balanced, sustainable general fund budget. In a couple of slides later on the presentation, I'll provide more information about that. But this budget does does have a very strong position for a general fund budget. Secondly, our budget is built on conservative revenue and expenditure projections with the expectation that over time that we're going to beat the revenue projections and then also budget for sufficient expenditures we need during the year. So we don't have shortfalls. Thirdly, making sure that we have operating expenses sufficient to cover any CFP projects. One of the signature projects this year is our library, which is fully covered with staff as well as the different costs from the estimating procedures done prior to that building being completed. Fourth, the proprietary fund balances by 2024, three to six months operating reserve. And this is an important piece, especially as we look at some of our utility funds of understanding the investments we make today. And each of those pieces compound over time that we want to make sure we have sufficient revenue in place as each one of those funds should be self-supporting on their own. And then lastly, maintain current service delivery levels. Next slide. So for the budget priorities, I would say there's four areas that are the pillars of the prioritization plus the fifth, which is similar to COVID last year and the continuation of COVID is the derecho of ensuring that we have sufficient dollars set aside for the cleanup efforts for this year. And I'll defer to each of these areas in in forthcoming slides. Next slide. Revenues, we'll start first, like starting there because it sets the size of the box that we have available for the city in order to move forth investments for this next year. The total budget overall, and this will be all the funds added together, is a total of $112.6 million. This is an increase of last, over last year of 20% or $18.7 million. Some of the noticeable additional revenue sources we have this year will be $3 million in fund balance that we are using for the derecho payments. $3 million in library building donations that the library themselves are doing as part of their fundraising and then also property taxes, which we talked about shortly. A little over $900,000 in property taxes. And that's where you see the slivers of the pie right there. Fund balance and property taxes alone almost make up half of that. Half of the total revenue we bring in, however, charges for services is a significant component of that. And that will be more so for the for the proprietary funds for the city. Next slide, please. So looking at the general fund, this is a much smaller component of it. But this will provide the 100% of our, the majority of our police, our fire, much of our parks and recreation, libraries and some of the core services provided by the city. The general, the general fund budget will be $26.8 million this next year. And similarly, it is an increase over last year. One of the areas where we do have an increase in there, which is the majority of our dollars, is in property taxes. Property taxes continues to be our mainstay for revenue for the city at 81%. It's, it's the taxes component plus the other financing sources. But I have to mention franchise fees is one of the core areas for us going forward as well. It's nearly $2 million of additional revenue that we brought in, starting this last year. So it's, it's a significant revenue source for the city. Next slide, please. So discussing property taxes, first and foremost, the tax rate, that's one of the questions that citizens are interested in. And also it's what basis, how much we're receiving this next year. And we'll be adopting a tax rate with a proposed budget before you of 14.19976, which is a decrease of 1.5 cents from last year's levy rate. This will be the third straight year of either a reduction or a flat property tax rate. 2020 was a flat rate, 2021 was reduced. And then, as I mentioned, 2022 is a further reduction. What this, what this ends up being is for the residential, for each residential home for per $100,000. That's $801 per household. It's broken up a little differently for commercials as well as multifamily properties. Those are actually true property tax reductions, being that there's no rollback involved. Their rollback is fixed. So it is an increase of $18 per household, per $100,000 of assessed valuation in this year. However, wanted to mention that is still $9 less than we had in place in 2020 and only $3 more than what was in place in 2018. So we're hovering right around that $800 range over the past 45 years. Next slide, please. So for the proprietary funds, this would be the business funds that the self-supporting funds that we have coming to the city. There's have to do my numbers right now, five major funds that we look at. One sewer rate, solid waste, water, stormwater and urban forest. Of those, we're recommending three of those for an increase this next year. And some of the forthcoming slides, I'll provide a little bit more detail on that. We are recommending a flat stormwater fee as well as a flat urban force fee. Yeah, next slide, please. So sanitary sewer, one of the first areas to start with is really talking about the the cost drivers for sanitary sewer over time. Sanitary sewer, just to remind City Council, we do not have our own wastewater treatment plant. So we, we receive those services from Cedar Rapids. As air costs continue to go up, those costs are passed on to the city as well as the capacity charges for our growing city as we negotiate those with them, those also impact charges over time. What that means though is last year, we had an increase of $670,000 in wastewater treatment costs just on the contract side. So that's not taken into account, staff, staff costs or any of the other maintenance or operation costs we have outside of that contract. So that alone is is one of the major or is the is the major driver, which is the reason for the recommendation for a 7% increase on the rate. However, the increases being recommended on the variable side, not across the rate itself. And I'll take a quick moment to mention what that is, is two years ago, there was a move to change the structure of the rates to to deal with the equity of water uses. So what this does is it places more of the cost burden over time over high water users because it's a flat, a low flat rate and then a higher variable rate. And that's the reason for the recommendation for the 7% on the variable rate. So that those costs, the increase of those costs will be more heavily borne by heavy water users. Users, so individuals that aren't fixed incomes, they won't see as much of an impact as the ones that utilize more water. What that equates to for the average household, it's about $2 a month. Next slide, please. So solid waste, solid waste has its own story of on the cost driver side. One of the areas, it's somewhat interesting, if you like recycling and Brian's taught me a lot over the last couple of years. The, the international market actually for recycling changed two to three years ago. So with that, the solid waste agency themselves continue to provide us a significant subsidy for what we currently pay in our tipping fees. But part of it is, as they're trying to balance their figures that they told us, they could no longer support the $67,000 incentive that they were providing different cities based upon different formulas, ours 67,000 in recycling incentives. So that's a major component of a revenue decrease coming out this next year. Similarly, over time, as Marion continues to grow, the, the increase in tonnage also increases the cost for us as the city is where we pick up that those tons and then we take them over to the solid waste agency and we pay the tipping fees over there. Also wanted to mention that with the recycling rates, the recycling fees are a little bit more than double. So a tipping rate for a standard garbage per ton is $40. On the recycling side, it's 85. So it's a little bit more than two times the cost. So as we've sustained our recycling numbers and in some, some years they've gone up, that has continued to pass on increased costs to the city. Lastly, it's a smaller line item. But for this fund, it's more prominent is that also across all of our funds this year, we were forecasting a decrease in revenue of almost half of what we previously received. So as we have, as we have larger fund balances in some of these funds, previously we used to receive almost $25,000 in interest revenue each year. That is decreased by $12,000. So what that means is for funded the size, even with a $1.20, 25 increase, we're estimating that to bring in $154,000 additional a year. The $12,000 loss is nearly 10% of that increase. So it does, it does speak to some of the reasons why we're recommending the increase this next year. And lastly, just wanted to mention for city councils, whilst the public that the solid way that public services is, has in the budget for this next year, a solid waste study in place in order to understand what, what do we need to have in place for our fleet replacement as well as a modernization of our, of our processes over the next couple decades. As you know, with these investments, they're not annual investments. They are 10 to 20 year investments. So they're going to be going through that process to make sure that we understand what the, what the need is for the city, is a growing city and what the underlying cost for that would be. That increase in there, as I previously mentioned, is $1.25 a month, which is almost exactly a 7% increase from the, from the current 1750 a month. Next slide, please. Water, been talking about personal wastewater, this is actually the water coming out of the pipe. Similarly, there are additional external as well, some internal pressures on the, on some of the cost drivers for water for this next year for the water department, one of which is the energy cost increases, which are borne by the moving of water across our infrastructure. Secondly, the loan payments for capital, for capital projects as they continue to pay down the debt. They have some increases over time that they need to address. And then lastly, is a snake, significant investment in an iron removal plant that will be also benefiting the entire water infrastructure we have here in the city. They expect the, the cost to be about $2 a month. They're still determining what that final figure will be. Will it be five to eight percent? But what we've modeled in the budget right now is the higher of that amount, eight percent. So they're determining right now where it sits within that range. And just to mention, they have a very complex rate, so I didn't put two pages of notes there. Now, next slide, please. So the expenditure side, having their, may look familiar in the vision of the city of Marion is a forward thinking city with vibrant neighborhoods and abundant opportunities for all residents, businesses and in, in, and industries. That is important to mention that because this is really what, as each dollar of expenditures we're looking at, this is what frames how we're, how we're moving forward those investments in this next year. And next slide, please. So that number should look familiar of the 112.6 million in total city budget. On the expenditure side, it matches the revenue side. The lion's share of that, almost 40% is for capital projects. So some of these capital projects might be projects that we didn't finish the previous year that we're moving forward as well as some of the newer projects. It also has in the budget for this next year, I believe it's 6.7 million for the derecho cleanup as well. So that's one of the projects that we're, we budgeted as if we're going to have some dollars to carry over to this next year. So that will be part of that increase. Also to remind City Council that we do have a, will be a beautiful, nice library right over yonder and that will also expect to be finished in this next year. So that's one of the significant investments that we do have in here. Business type activities this next, this comes into the proprietary fund. So this is those previous funds you mentioned, plus the ones that weren't mentioned. And then after that comes public safety, public works and so on and so forth. Next slide, please. So bringing it down a level two, looking at the general fund. So bringing it down a level two, looking at the general fund, public safety continues to be the number, number one function class that the city invests in on an annual basis. Just over fifty three percentage of, of total expenditures. After that is culture and recreation. So that would be, as I mentioned, parks and recreation as well as the library in there primarily. And then general government, which will be a conglomerate of many different administrative sources that help move forward the city's government. All the, after that, six point six community and economic development. And then public works is a smaller portion of this. And the reason being is because the general fund does not support as much dollars in public works as the, the other funds do. So many cases develop, we, we try to find where developed, where makes sense to tie development dollars to the, to the cost for that development. So that's why you'll see public works being a very small sliver of that total piece. And next slide, please. Oh, actually, one thing before we move on, if you can go back just one, one time, Tara, thank you. General government does have a larger slice of the pie, it's usually not this big. And one of the reasons is there is a million dollars in there for the, the debt show paid or cost share payment for this next year. So that's on a normal basis, there wouldn't be an additional one million dollars. So that increased it a couple percentage points. Uh, next slide, please. So on, on the general fund, seventy four percent of the total general fund dollars are for, are for salaries. So the general fund is a, is run by individuals in, in our city. So they'll, so the salary costs as well as the benefit cost is, will drive where the dollars go in the general funds. Second to that is contractual services. Over time, this continues to increase as technology and other agreements help impact how we provide our general, our general fund services, transfers, repairs and maintenance all the way through staff development will be a much smaller component under ten percent. Uh, next slide, please. For the general fund balance, if you remember from the initial slide, one of the areas, want to have a structural, general fund balance. And what structural balance, what that concept means is want to make sure we bring in at least enough sufficient revenues to pay for the expenditures that we have on an annual basis. If not, we're running a deficit and over time we'll have to dip into our fund balance. So for FY twenty two, we expect to have a nine point seven million dollar fund balance or as, as we do our calculation of our reserve position, a forty six percent. The fund balance is negative, though. And the reason that we are recommending a budget with a negative fund balance or with the unstructurally balanced budget is because these costs are for one time uses only. There's two pieces that come into this, one is the, the retro payment. So what we're doing is we're saying with our general fund reserve, we're going to use a million of that in order to pay down the cost for the retro. And secondly, there's a hundred and fifty thousand in there for the public safety information management system. So this is also a signature project, moving forward over the next two years in order to modernize and bring up to date some of our public management, our public, our public safety management infrastructure. Sat in a meeting the other day with, with one of the, one of the potential providers for services and people were very excited. So I'm sure you hear more about it in the next, next year plus. And so the budget priorities, here's, here's the, the four pillars I mentioned that we'll talk about in detail. One, investing in employees, as I previously mentioned, especially for the general fund employees. Employees is what drives our service delivery model, we are a customer service line of business. So it's important to make sure that we, we stay on top of those costs and be mindful of the needs of those, of those areas over time. Secondly is that funding to receive planned priorities. Thirdly, maximizing technology investments. And lastly, enhancing service delivery overall. Next slide, please. So on the investment in employees, we have built into the budget a two point five percent pay for performance allowance. And what that means is that would be the ceiling for a non-bargained employee of what they would have, be available for based upon their performance review come four, one and twenty two. I should mention that for the bargain staff, that will be determined during the bargaining contracts. So we'll see where those percentages line up in the coming months. Secondly, which becomes, continues to be a large cost driver for the city is our health insurance rates. Our, our consultant is recommending actually above a six percent increase closer to a twelve to thirteen percent increase. Given where we have been at with past numbers, we believe six percent is, is sufficient because we have a very strong fund balance position. But over time, if those, if that thirteen percent is still there this next year, we may be coming forward with recommendations of either increasing that or looking at, or as well, we are looking at other strategies on how to mitigate costs over time. And lastly, we have this concept called salary savings in the budget. What it does is with conservative forecast, you would expect from the city every year that we come to you at the end of the year and say, we have, we have, we have addition, we have more money in fund balance coming into fund balance and going out into the year. That's if we do it conservatively, we can plan appropriately. So what we're looking to do is we're looking to use two hundred thousand dollars of what would normally come out due to salary savings and repurpose that in the budget. So it's, it's a tool recommended by the best practices in finance in, in order to make sure that you don't leave too much money on the table and, and overtax, as they would like to say. Next slide, please. Strategic plan, the strategic plan, I won't go on and on about it because it's one of the things that we spent a lot of time on. But to say it's, it's a, also a signature opportunity for us as a city, one in the process, we went through an engaging city council, making sure we understand your priorities and then also moving forward in a, in a structure that we can then look over the next three years and, and have a, a structure for moving those forward. In that, we have four new positions that we have recommended in the budget. Align with that, one is a procurement coordinator, a right away technician, an environmental specialist as well as an equipment operator in order to move forward the strategic plan initiatives. Also wanted to mention the mental health liaisons, which is a new program this year in public, in public safety. And the police department has shown to be very successful. And so we're supporting the continuation of that as well as continuing infrastructure and our HR and development for all layers of staff in the organization and making sure that we're focusing on a, we are very optimistic that over time we will be able to meet sometime again. And so we have in there also a part-time recreation programmer that will be working very closely with our, one of our other signature projects in the city of Marion, the new YMCA, and working very closely with them in providing programming as well as an increase in part-time hours for our events coordinator. Next slide, please. Under the maximizing tech, tech investments, first and foremost, up there is an IT application specialist. It's just not there because Tara runs the slides and so he gets some weight in that. But that is a, also a very important position in order to help us make sure that we're utilizing all this technology we've invested in. So we have numerous systems in the city, as you know, trying to connect to meetings and other pieces that need to integrate seamlessly. And so this position will help us to continue to maximize the investments that we already have in the city. Some of the other one are E miss lane is bill, billings will help up finance in some of their non-standard billing process. And then, once again, I will make a mention of the public safety information management system. This is a, three hundred thousand dollars is in the budget this year for this. So it's a significant investment we have. But once again, this will, this will inform the, the information management infrastructure, not just for police, but also for emergency communications, fire, our police and fire. So the expectation right now is we're, as we're looking at it, is it would make sure that the systems are aligned as well as being able to get the information we put into it, out of it more readily available. So they're very excited about this. Uh, next slide, please. And lastly, enhance service delivery. This is an expectation of everyone who works at the city of Marion. Every year, we're expected to continue to find new ways to provide enhanced services and learn from our residents and how we can improve our services in delivery to them. One of the areas we have in there is an online codification to make sure that the codes and the different decisions adopted in this meeting are also open to the public and it's efficient in how they're updated within our systems. We want to make sure we have enough money or enough dollars set aside for any potential investigations for civil rights for this next year. And then lastly, with our, with the water department leaving and looking at a customer service standpoint, we wanted to make sure we have another part-time receptionist who can one, make sure to, to coordinate the communication through the building, but also it's a more efficient service delivery model rather than pulling staff out of other areas every time someone comes into the building. Uh, next slide, please. So the, the retro, August, it's hopefully after this year, we won't, we'll talk about it again next year probably. But after a couple of years, hopefully it's not a recurrent theme, but it was a big one for this year. So much so that we are putting aside three million dollars in this next year in order to pay down the city, the city's share of it. The total amount that is estimated to be spent by this, the city overall is forty three million dollars and which we expect our, we're budgeting that is six point five million would be the city share. That city share of six point five million equates to three, four hundred and thirty eight dollars a household. So what we're budgeting for this next year would be half of that being paid and we would not be asking for any increases or any change or any direct tax increases for citizens. Where we're pulling that directly from is our current fund balances from three funds from our general fund, as talked about previously, road uses, well, stormwater management. So I have to say, we, if it weren't for the position of those funds, we wouldn't be in as good as a position and be able to pay it down as quickly as possible. Because as you know, the longer we hold it, the more we pay for that debt. After this next year, we'll build a, we'll have a better indication of what the remaining balance will be. And then what is the timeline for payment underneath that? So that will be coming in the, in the next year's budget as well as updates to city council in the coming months. Uh, next slide, please. Mike Simprich, the other day, as he gave his presentation, he, he had a couple quotes in there and I, being a liberal arts undergrad, I resonated with that. So if you allow me for a minute, we shape our buildings thereafter, they shape us by Winston Churchill. And I thought it very fitting to use that, or as I was looking at quotes to try to talk about capital projects is the largest area in the budget for this next year. Sometimes I even forget that as I'm looking at the budget, thinking about where the dollars are at. A lot of the dollars that we're putting forth are for the signature buildings. But I think as Churchill, Churchill said very well, is we're not just investing in infrastructure. We're, we're investing in community spaces, we're investing in opportunities that don't currently exist that are, once they're planted, they're going to grow organically in new ways for the city over a thirty, fifty plus year horizon. So we're very excited to talk about, once again, the new library building, which is expected to be open in spring of next year. Can imagine how quickly that is there moving forward very quickly as well as moving forward with the extension of Sixth Avenue. Over, making sure I can still do my directions over here, east. The start of the Seventh Avenue streetscape, which has come before city council previously. This is going to have a complete different look as well as feel to the uptown areas. So we're very excited about it as well as, I'm sure all public services staff have been very patient as moving for the public services facility and getting the completion of that. And lastly, the, the retro cleanup because the retro costs are currently in our CIP budget. Uh, next slide, please. You might recognize some of the people in there because these are, these are some pictures of some of the staff here in for the city of Marion. As previously mentioned, not just the budget dollars is allocated to them, but they are the lifeblood of the city. And it's been amazing to see what each department has done as with the changes to COVID last year, the retro this year, and then just carrying forward with their normal responsibilities here at work as well as the stressors they do have at home. So we wanted to make sure to, to note the amazing work of our staff that through the budgeting process, but really through the delivery services are, are the centerpiece of the city of Marion. So we're, we're very proud of what was done this last year across the organization and excited to see what next year holds. Uh, next slide, please. So where are we at? We're at the end of the calendar. Happy to say, we've talked about various iterations of this. So today is the public hearing on the budget. So if there's any questions from the public and or any from city council, we'd love to discuss those. And afterward, afterwards, you'll have a motion before you in order to approve the FY twenty two budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Zach. So the public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody waiting to speak, Rachel?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. While we're waiting to see if anybody steps up, have, have you received any comments, Zach?
I have not.
Okay. Bill, nothing, Rachel? Okay. Okay, so they, let's note that there were no comments and we'll close the pub, public hearing and move on to the next resolution.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, three, approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, three, approving the FY twenty two budget. Questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, four, approving, approving award to, of seven thousand to Willis Dady Emergency, Emergence, I can't talk, emergency, emergency shelter, six thousand five hundred to Marion Cares and six thousand five hundred to Waypoint Services as part of the Civil Rights Commission Low and Moderate Income Housing Assistance Grant.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, four, approving award of seven thousand dollars to Willis Dady Emergency Shelter, sixty five hundred dollars to Marion Cares and sixty five hundred dollars to Waypoint Services as part of the Civil Rights Commission Low and Moderate Income Housing Assistance Grant. Questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Councilmember Goodalia.
Sorry, I was halfway through it, but didn't realize I was muted. Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, five, in opposition of Iowa bill SF two, five, two that would partially invalidate lawful source of income ordinances requiring landlords to accept HUD federal housing choice vouchers.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, five, in opposition of Iowa bill SF two, five, two that would partially invalidate lawful source of income ordinances requiring landlords to accept HUD federal housing choice vouchers. Questions or discussion?
Your honor. Yes. Just a quick update, I know on Tuesday, you probably heard about this from Amal, but it had on Tuesday passed the House of Representatives with an amendment. The Senate did pass the bill with their amendment, so it is now on its way to the governor. I just thought I would provide that update.
Okay, thank you. Okay, questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve project calendar regarding a tax incentive request for Community Housing Initiatives Incorporated. Motion to receive and file request for financial assistance from Community Housing Initiatives Incorporated. Motion directing staff to negotiate a development agreement with Community Housing Initiatives Incorporated regarding tax incentives.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding a tax incentive request from Community Housing Initiatives. Motion to receive and file request for financial assistance. And a motion directing staff to negotiate a development agreement with Community Housing Initiatives regarding the tax incentives. Any questions or discussions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion approved, project calendar is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, six, expressing intent to provide financial support to Rookwood Estates LLC.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, six, expressing intent to provide financial support to Rookwood Estates LLC. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, seven, providing for the levy of taxes to pay principal and interest under a certain general obligation disaster recovery loan agreement.
Second.
Been moved and, and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, seven, providing for the levy, levy of taxes to pay principal and interest under a certain general obligation disaster recovery loan agreement. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, eight, approving partial payment number Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, eight approving partial payment number seven to Wendling Quarries Incorporated for final disposition of storm debris in the amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Brant, seconded by Councilman Steve, suddenly I can't remember his last name, sorry Steve. To approve resolution number two nine, three, five, eight approving partial payment number seven to Wendling Quarries Incorporated for final disposition of storm debris in the amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, nine approving purchase from equipment management company of Genesis extrication tools in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand ninety-six dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, five, nine approving purchase from equipment management company of Genesis extrication tools in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand ninety-six dollars. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, zero. Approving contract with T and K Roofing and Sheet Metal Company regarding Thomas Park Administration Building and shop roof repair in the amount of two hundred and five thousand dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, zero. Approving a contract with T and K Roofing and Sheet Metal Company regarding Thomas Park Administration Building and shop roof repair in the amount of two hundred and five thousand dollars. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Okay, now we have a public hearing regarding the Marion Public Library Building Project Furnishings and Case Goods Bid Package. I think, do we have, is it Sean with us?
Yes, I am here. So, uh. The Marion Public Library held public bidding for furniture package one, furniture package two, and furniture, furniture package three. Regarding the new library project furniture package, package one was focused on library furnishings. Bid package two was focused on case goods such as end panels or any sort of millwork. And furniture package three focused on custom caseworks related to children's furniture and active learning areas. We received several bids on furniture package one. One bid on furniture package two and furniture package three. The lowest qualified bidders are listed on the page in front of you regarding the project.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Public hearing is now open. Rachel, do we have anybody?
I have received no comments.
And have we received anything in your department, Mike?
I have not received anything.
Thank you. Okay, still nothing, Rachel?
Correct, I have no comments.
Okay. All right, we will close the public hearing and proceed with the resolution.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, one. Accepting bids and awarding contract to Library Furniture International regarding the Marion Public Library Building Project Furnishings and Case Goods Bid Package in the amount of four hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars plus an additional twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars in contingency.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, one. Accepting bids and awarding contract to Library Furniture International regarding the Marion Public Library Building Project Furnishings and Case Goods Bid Package in the amount of four hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars plus an additional twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars in contingency. Questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, two. Approving change order number one with Acme Electric regarding the revised floor boxes associated with Marion Library Project. BP twenty-six A electrical in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and two cents. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, two approving change order number one with Acme Electric regarding the revised floor boxes associated with the Marion Library Building Project. BP twenty-six A electrical in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and two cents. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, three approving change order number one with Peak Construction Group regarding the Marion Library Project. Bid package zero, five, B and zero, six, A regarding doors in a credit amount of nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, three approving change order number one with Peak Construction Group regarding the Marion Library Project. Bid package zero, five, B and zero, six, A regarding doors in a credit amount of nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, four approving change order number zero, zero, one with Zephyr Aluminum regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP zero, eight, A. Glass and glazing regarding doors in the amount of thirty-two thousand and sixty dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, four approving change order number one with Zephyr Aluminum regarding the Marion Library Building Project. BP zero, eight, A glass and glazing regarding doors in the amount of thirty-two thousand, sixty dollars. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to receive, file and discuss an application for future major streets oversizing cost reimbursements in association with Rockwood Estates Third Edition.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to receive, file and discuss an application for future major streets oversizing cost reimbursements in association with Rookwood Estates Third Edition. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, five. Approving contract and bond with Hunt Construction Company Incorporated regarding the twenty twenty-one sidewalk ramp project in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, five approving contract and bond with Hunt Construction Group Incorporated regarding the twenty twenty-one sidewalk ramp project in it, in amount, in the amount of one hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, six approving contract and bond with LL Pelling Company, Inc. Regarding the two thousand twenty-one HMA resurfacing project in the amount of one million, sixty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty cents. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, six. Approving contract and bond with LL Pelling Incorporated regarding the twenty twenty-one HMA resurfacing project in the amount of one million, sixty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty cents. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, seven approving contract and bond with Peterson Contractors, Inc. regarding the CMAR Phase Four project in the city of Marion from the east side of Indian Creek Bridge over Marion Boulevard to Seventh Street. Twin continuous welded girder bridge and PCC trail in the amount of one million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and six dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, seven approving contract and bond with Peterson Contractors, Inc. Regarding the CMAR Phase Four project in the city of Marion from the east side of Indian Creek Bridge over Marion Boulevard to Seventh Street. Twin continuous welded girder bridge and PCC trail in the amount of one million, six hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and six dollars and twenty cents. Questions or discussion? Yes, Grant?
Uh, yes, a question for Mike. Just as a refresher, when will that work start?
Um, so originally it was June seventh of twenty-one, however, due to the backlog of steel, the late start date is August ninth of twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
So they have the working days start at that point, so they could technically start the project before after that, but that's when they start charging days.
Other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, eight approving change order number seven with Peterson Contractors, Inc. Regarding the CMAR Phase Three project in the city of Marion from Marion Boulevard Bridge over Indian Creek North to preservation of Trail Bridge over Indian Creek Bridge new steel girder in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, eight approving change order number seven with Peterson Contractors, Inc. Regarding the CMAR Phase Three project in the city of Marion from Marion Boulevard Bridge over Indian Creek North to preservation of Trail Bridge over Indian Creek Bridge new steel girder in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, nine approving the task order one. Marion Airport Consultant Services Agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, six, nine approving task order one Marion Airport Consultant Services Agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Questions or discussion? Yes, Grant?
So one of the great things of having a day between our work session and then our formal session is have an opportunity to look at critical resolutions that are coming our way. Plus occasionally we get input from our constituency about things that they heard during the work session. And I, I want to call that out for those in the listening audience. That is a value that I see with how we just generally conduct our affairs within the city to have that time for additional supplemental input based on what people heard during the work session. To that point, it was highlighted to me that in the work scope that we have defined for HDR. I, as I went back and reread the work scope, it seemed to be a little lightly worded for safety related concerns, but I do note that in two point two of the, of the work scope document, it does have a citation regarding safety critical elements. I would just hope that what we can do is because that has been, I know Randy's had a concern about the safety related manners. I know that the, the airport committee has been concerned about safety related things that we move, we move the treatment of safety related considerations to the very early phases of HDR's work scope so that if there's something else out there that we've not yet identified, they can point us to that so that we can refactor our prioritization of work for the airport. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention and I, I don't sense that this work scope is so rigid that we can't treat safety items earlier in the, in the work effort rather than later.
Thank you, Grant. Other questions or discussion?
I have something, Collette.
Or Renee.
Um, it's nothing new. I just want to chime in and agree with what Grant is saying. You know, I think everyone knows how I feel about this and so safety is definitely what I would like to make sure we're prioritizing these funds for in case we get to this fifty thousand dollar threshold and we need more to kind of achieve and we have to have another discussion. I definitely would want the safety pieces focused on first. So just wanted to echo that. Thanks.
Thanks, Renee. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine, three, seven, zero. Approving a request for demolition of a structure located at eight forty-seven, Eighth Avenue per Marion Code Section one, seven, six, point, five, zero.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine, three, seven, zero. Approving a request for demolition of a structure located at eight, four, seven, Eighth Avenue per Marion Code Section one, seven, six, dot, five, zero. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. We've come to the end of our agenda. Now we've got an opportunity for public to provide any comments that they would like to share with city council. Do we have anybody waiting to speak, Rachel?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. But we'll move on to council comments and Grant will start with you this evening.
Well, I would just say that I welcome the sunshine and the slight warm-up that we're now experiencing. I just really continue to encourage everybody. I know it's a challenge, but be diligent, try to get your first or second Fauci ouchie as soon as you can.
Thank you, Grant. Nothing tonight, okay? Mr. Jensen? Okay. Randy? Renee?
Yeah, just one thing, just for my peers and, and just for public and staff. We had gotten, we being council, correspondence from a resident regarding snow removal and fees and charges. And I spent quite a bit of time with both Seth, our interim director of parks, as well as the resident. I do believe it's, you know, moving toward a resolution, but what I did offer to do is ask that we put this on a future agenda before the next winter season and just visit it and make sure we all not only know what it is, but see how it jives with our neighboring communities. I think there's, some people do a twelve hour removal, some do twenty-four. I think we should have that discussion. We should look at our fees and, and then our notification process. The resident, you know, made some, some good points that I said I would make sure to bring to everyone's attention and ensure we have a discussion on it to make sure we'd all. and ensure we have a discussion on it to make sure we don't want to make any changes or just that we know what that policy is because it was a tough winter. And I think that policy got exercised some and I don't know if we've looked at it in a while, but I think we should. So just want to get that on the record for a, an upcoming meeting in the next eight months. Thanks.
I think that's a great idea. Hopefully it's nine months or ten months, right? Wouldn't that be a treat if we didn't have snow for ten months?
Yes.
I would just like to thank the, the team that has worked so hard during this budget season. This is my third time going through the process and it continues to get better and better and better. And I think this year there was, you know, even more pressure with all of the other things going on. So just really appreciate the time and effort that the team has put into that. And with that, I think we have a closed session this evening.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. Second.
Great, can we get Legal's opinion, please?
If Your Honor, I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five one C.
Thank you.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Ms. Goodelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
Okay, well now move into closed session. We'll give us about five minutes, it will take about five minutes. Okay.